I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do welcome Susan Condon and Lisa's playing board for March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. We are in person and also online. Um, so I
I'll make the motion approved event from the, uh, March, well.
I have one edit before we do that. Um, Lisa, on the first page where we talk about, um, the Botar project. Yep. I think we just need to change it to, um, when we have other signs. They do, however, still want three different sides, two directional and one monument.
Okay.
Okay, we'll make that change. Okay. Um, that was all I had. So now if anyone else doesn't have anything else.
No, let's correct, let me understand this.
Okay.
Is that what they want or what they, what we want, what you just mentioned?
I read it as they, what Botar wants. Cause they wanted the two direction, they, they want the two directional and the one monument.
Yeah, they want. Right.
For a total of three, not one directional and one monument.
Okay.
There's nails.
That's how I understand.
Okay. Okay. So I want to make sure we were all clear on it anyway. So, okay. All right. Now I'll entertain a motion for the minutes to be approved.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Rich, second by Doug. All in favor?
Aye.
And then it's our approved. Okay. The first item on our agenda is the Fayetteville Veterinary Hospital located at eighty-one, twenty-two East Tennessee Street in Fayetteville. Uh, this is up for more discussion and a possible decision on the amended site plan, um, at tax map number zero nine, one point dash zero one, dash zero one, point two. And we've got a couple of people here.
Um, where would you like, I have copies. I know times, uh, fingers always working. You want it right here in front or you want it over the side? Is this easier to see?
Sure. Yeah. Well, yeah.
Um, my name is Lisa Lindberg. I'm from Capeland Beer Freeman Associates. And this is Rachel Hentzaski with Ashen Grom.
So I know you guys have seen us a couple of times. Yeah, we asked for some additional things, which I know they've been brought in for us. So, um, Doug, do you want to address anything or?
Yeah, we had a couple of things come up, Lisa. Um, we've been reviewing this submission that you sent in last week and we're wondering if you could elaborate on phasing plan that, um, was submitted, exactly how the phasing plan works.
Oh, yep.
I don't know about the phasing plan, but it was difficult to understand what was going on.
Yeah. So basically, um, what this is supposed to show. Um, um, so.
Can you just say the date on that drawing so we know we're all looking at the change drawing?
Yep. This is the three nineteen twenty-four.
Yep.
Yeah. So this was, yeah, this was the last set that we submitted. Um, so basically we're showing where the existing building is. So the intention is to keep the existing building functioning and build the sanitary, the subject field and build the new building. So that's why we're showing over here, um, this is a, a temporary haul road. We've been, uh, just in discussions with the neighbor so that we can do a stone lay down area for basically contractor parking and staging. It's not the intention to have any materials stored on this site here at all. Um, but just so that they can move stuff around, um, while they're working and building, building this one.
So I think what we're looking for was probably something that says the buildings, this building is going to be used for X amount of time. When that's going on, the parking is going to be over here. And then when the building comes down, you know, is the parking get built before the new building goes up? Or you know, how does the whole thing come together? It wasn't really clear on this drawing how that was going to happen.
Did you have? Yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to make that a little bit more clear on the drawings. But the intention is that the subject and the, and the building, the new building get built first. Um, they remain fully, uh, operational in their existing building. Um, when the new building is completed, then they'll move over into their new building. Uh, once they're settled and get all their equipment out, um, they do have a tenant. There's a, uh, an apartment above the existing building. Um, they have a tenant above there. Not sure when his lease is up, they'll sort that out. And then they will, um, will work with the work contractor to get a price for demolishing, demolishing the existing building and building the permanent parking.
Do you have a, a license or an easement or whatever for the property by your neighbors that you're going to get?
Um, just a, uh, we can get a, like a written agreement from them.
I would think you'd, I, I would think he would want it and you would want it just to make it official that.
Okay, sure. We've worked with the neighbor before and he's been really pleasant to work with. And so we haven't had any issues with the house, but we can certainly get.
It can be a license agreement or easement, whatever works.
Doug, did you hear that?
Yeah, uh, the grading plan didn't really seem to match the last grading plan that we saw.
Oh, yes, I did notice that. The one that was submitted on the thirteenth had all the grading information. Um, it was, I think that was a, a layer issue. This is, this is what the plan from the, the thirteenth submission was. It was just there in the computer, we basically have everything. And for some reason this one was on the stormwater plan. So, um, I do have a, a plan to replace that one that actually is showing the correct information. Well, the correct grading information. Um, I have basically all of the stormwater units. We, um, did shift them around a little bit because the driveway had stuck. So I can get that to you so you have the, the newest information.
So the one in our, the one in this packet.
Yeah, if you look at the one from the nineteenth, it's showing stormwater information. It's kind of, or erosion control, sorry, instead of stormwater information. Yeah. But the, the plans from the thirteenth have.
Two twenty-nine date is grading on that.
Oh, I don't know.
Okay. I have a copy here.
I'm not quite sure what happened there, but.
Sometimes it just takes a long click.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. So the two twenty-nine plan should be the correct.
Be correct. Well, not, yeah, but there were changes made that may also reflect the rating plan. So while the basics are probably the same, it's not exactly the same. We can't just swap out sheets.
Yeah, I think we want to have all the same dates.
We'll be upset for sure.
Yeah, we want to have all the same dates. But yes, I will, when we're all set.
The one on two twenty-nine is not correct. Not anymore.
Well, it doesn't have the correct date on it. I'd have to look and see if we changed anything on the storm. I, I think those drawings.
It's the one that you have up there. That, is that the two twenty-nine that you're showing?
No, this, this one I just printed today because I noticed when I was going through my plans today.
Oh, that's not my own.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No.
Take it out.
Yes.
I don't want to see something we haven't seen.
So this is not.
So what you're looking at, yes.
So our, 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 two oh one is not the right.
So I hate to be like this, but if we haven't seen that, get it out of here. Take it out. And just general comment. Looking at right now, L two oh one, those are proposed buildings. Is that proposed or is that the building?
That is the proposed new building.
Well, I'd like to see something that says proposed, but it's just me. I want to see something that says this is what we're building.
That's what, that's customary. It's customary.
That to me isn't.
The, the saving building. Which one is it? New, new building?
That's right. It's, I'm just one call, but I'd like to see this is the new building that we're built, you know, whatever. Proposed always says, I can change it. I don't want it to be changed until I'm approved on.
I think it's just that.
No.
It's okay.
I, I may not be standard.
But it was not, I don't think it was a mention to.
No, no, I understand. I, I just, when I see proposed, I always.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. And then Doug, you started. Anything else on your end?
Yeah, I'm still going through the SWIP. If there were some issues with the SWIP and some, some of the drawings inside, internal to the SWIP, um, you just had, pull it up online. It's just little bubbles all over the screen. It's an incomplete drawing. If you can pull it up, I mean, it was page thirty-four on the SWIP. It just looked like it was.
I've got it. The paper one reads right.
The paper one.
The PDF.
The PDF.
No.
There's something wrong with it.
I didn't see the paper one till tonight, but.
Oh, so the PDF it has.
Like speech bubbles or something.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll just reprint it. And I don't know, something happens sometimes when you print them and some of them get comments and some of them don't. So that must be the issue. Cause when we look at it, it doesn't show up like that when we're viewing it. So maybe it's an Adobe thing.
Sometimes, um, when you're.
Oh, it kind of haven't turned on.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
Oh, it kind of haven't turned on the conversation.
It, it, it could be, yeah.
So sometimes you can have, keep that from happening when you're on those, um, viewing, the viewers, you know, online. If you go instead of just like screenshotting or, or printing that page, if you go to, like there's a pull down menu on the side usually where it will allow you to make a print, like they, and then you download it.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And that eliminates a lot of that sometimes. And then you get the key nice and.
Okay, um, these, we did get, was that, okay. Um, does anyone else have any other general comments with this latest?
I have a question, um, on the S one plan, site traffic plan. I consider, I could certainly follow the, uh, sequence of sewer to leach fields. But on the S two drawing in the lower right where it has how sewer to leach field, you have separate tag, you have deck one, same building, crack two, and then the big leach field. That all comes from this structure, which, where is that structure located? On the left most part of that house sewer to leach field drawing? Is that in the sub basement building? Is it inside the building? Is there a structure outside?
Where it's coming from?
I have something.
It just shows a sewer line coming from the building and then this, this originating facility, which just consists of a uh, seems to be a substrate structure which just has the floor stack coming down through the wall out to this system as fluid as agents to the building. Where that same structure is, is a mystery.
House sewer. Instruction. This, this should be the actual building that it's.
If there's no buildings distinct, separate buildings shown on this drawing, then probably it's somewhere in the proposed new building.
Well, that, that would come from here.
So it's inside that building?
I, so I, I did not, um, our engineers prepared these drawings. So as far as I know, this is coming from the, some for putting the floor drain. Yeah, this looks like an existing building.
Grade on both sides. So, so it's clearly somewhere below the ground with a grade.
Inside. Do you guys have, uh?
How does this happen?
Is there a basement on this or it's just, okay, so it's just the slab on grade? So I, I would have to ask them, but it might, this, this should be the existing building or the, excuse me, the new building, and then everything else comes out from the new building. So this is interior to the building. This is, this is out to the leach field.
Do you have any questions, Doug?
No, that was the plan.
Do any other board members have questions?
I do, but I'll let anybody else go first. Just a quick question. What is the color of the lettering on the sign?
Uh, I don't know.
Yeah, I started in the beginning. So I think it's a little luminous.
Yeah, it's a little, we had a, um, did I grab the, the Sasha detail sign?
Oh, I have.
We got, this one I have, I have these small versions.
We got these and it just says printed logo and text.
Black.
Well, yeah, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be black with the red logo. There's the, it's like a maroon logo.
Cause ours was black and white. Oh, I was unsure.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. So that's the.
Yeah.
So it's like maroon. Yeah. Black raised letters, probably not printed.
That's the beginning of the set. Yeah, I'm sure I did that. Um, are there details for the post combinations?
For the house.
Signs?
The sign, yeah.
The columns I assume are covered under the building.
It's the same detail.
See that, but.
Yeah.
The post, the, um, sign post.
Yeah, that's on here. It's, uh, a four point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I did have some comments about the phasing and I think that on a site that's tight like this, where in narrow and the access is controlled by DOT that obviously can be done, but it'll require a little thoughtful shuffling. Um, and, you know, I think that I would like to see as far as a phasing plan goes, like a list of erosion control goes in, you know, permits, erosion control, um, removals. You know, there's like a boilerplate list that everyone you start with and then you kind of edit it for the project. Because if there's a significant amount of time that the existing building is going to be in use while the current building and its utilities are being built, months, six months, um, how are the customer part, is this going to be striped somehow to make that easy? Is because of contractors and, you know, existing employees and help in the, um, construction equipment and the lay down. I mean, and when you said they weren't going to store materials here, I, that's kind of what they do in the lay down area.
Yeah, we've asked them not to store materials until the frame, the building frame is constructed. So they're going to be trucking in materials, um, daily until the building is up.
Um, because that's seventy-two hundred square feet. That's massive.
Right. So we, we need parking for all the contractors because they don't have any parking.
Right.
Um, and excavators, um, whatever, yeah, that's all.
So will there be, um, a fence?
Yeah.
Okay. So we would want to see all those details. Um, and then erosion control for this area because Goldbrook is right there. Um, you know, there's wetlands nearby and all that. And I know it's a fairly flat area, which makes things easier. But to come in and have this is showing a, the finished grade is adjoining the adjacent material. But it's a foot of excavation over that whole area. Is that being called away? That's a lot of material and.
No, I don't think that was the intention because they're supposed to, they're supposed to restore when they're done. That's what the, we put in the notes.
I saw it.
Yeah, so when they're done.
A, a foot of removal over seventy-two hundred square feet. Is that going to be stockpiled somewhere?
Yeah.
We need to know.
To put it back.
And see that because that's a lot of material. And that would need to be treated for erosion control for that amount of time. And there's no erosion control shown for any, any of this on the erosion control column. It's just back further in set. There's just absolutely nothing. And, um, you know, this, this, that's where the kind of it all ties into the phasing plan as well. Because if there's at least six months while both of these are, are existing, if you will, then, then the, um, stormwater management needs to be, have a phasing plan as well. Because you can't have all of this existing water coming like this and not being directed and treated, especially because this is all going to be torn up and go into the DOT ditch, which goes into Goldbrook and the wetlands and all of that. So that's critical as part of the phasing plan to see. And it generally would be several drawings even, not just a list of notes to show how that works out. Um, you know, and then if that's going to be restored, that's one thing. The other thing is that there's an existing curb cut right here with a, um, a pipe in it. And we would want to make sure that that didn't accidentally get used because it'd be really quick and easy for people to come in off of there. And that's not a DOT of curb cut project.
If you drive by, you can't, like, it's not even a curb cut. It's all grown over. It's like.
Right. But I know, I, I mean, that'll get used. So we want to make sure that doesn't because they, we don't want to approve a plan that doesn't have something on here. And then later on DOT comes by and then they look at our drawings and they're like, you know, how did you, didn't say no?
Sure.
And then how will the conflicts be avoided with the existing customers coming in here? And then when this becomes, when this is being demoed and they're using this area for the demo, where's everybody going to park?
Yeah, um, yes. The intention is to keep this.
For the customers?
Customers while the transition is.
So that would take weeks. So if you're having customers with animals walking all the way over here through a construction site.
No, no, only, only under face two when the building's getting demoed. They wouldn't have to walk through a construction site.
Well, demo visit construction.
Well, the new building is here.
Oh, okay. So they'll drive in and park over here and then walk to here.
Yes.
Okay. So that needs to be explained and, and is part of the. Some, I know a lot of people park over here right now and that that's not intended to continue. So you might want to make a note or something saying that's not going to continue just to show that acknowledging it and saying it's not going to continue. We'll get a little weird about that kind of stuff that's going to continue on. Um, if you're not going to have materials stored there, um, that would be helpful. Showing striping is part of your, um, phasing plan so that we can see that the appropriate amount of parking spaces are being provided for in one place or another during each of the stages. Like I said, the stormwater should be shown during the staging plan for whether it's, how it's being directed as things are happening, as well as the way the erosion control, um, changes.
So even though the parking for the existing building is in existing condition, it's not straightened out and you have access and parking is to the left, um, uphill. No, it's here.
Okay.
Um, because this is, they're right, yeah, so they're, 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 it's there. Um, so there's signs on the building that say, yeah, it's here, but this isn't straight.
No, I know. It's just brown.
Uh, no, this is asphalt.
Oh, this part's asphalt.
This is just, this is brown.
This is right here.
And, um, nobody parks here, so they're, um, to the former.
Right.
Yeah. I see, yeah, it's next to it.
I think that because it's going to be confusing once there's stuff going on, maybe it's just signage.
Yeah, and hunting.
Customer parking or.
Yeah.
Just to eliminate the confusion because there's going to be people coming in and out. They're going to be distracted. And destruction, all is going to be using this one, which is already a little confusing. So why, like, is there a thing in the middle, you know? Um, so that, but I think that all just kind of becomes obvious when you start working through the, um, and then with the stormwater stuff, that kind of led me to looking at the SWIP. And, um, you know, I had some questions about the, and I know that you, I don't know, you can answer these or not, but, um, the watershed areas don't seem to be delineated in a way that follows the contours.
Okay, yeah. Uh, I will have to ask the engineer about that. I'm sorry.
This map looks different than the one online. Because.
In the PDF?
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Um, and I can pull it up. Why don't I do some, do you have it up? Can you go back to the document center? Um, scroll down, I can still, yeah. Yeah, it's actually, if please I can put it up there. That's even better. It's the, it's the bottom one. It's thirty-four, I think. It's starting with five. The SWIP, is that what you want to see? Yes, please.
Yeah, page thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Yeah.
I don't know why.
You can type it in at the top, at the top too, if that's easier.
I'm sure. It's the pre map. So.
Okay.
This is the post map. So go back.
Thirty-three has all the stuff on it.
And squares on yours.
Yeah, okay.
Like little conversation bubbles.
Yeah. So the existing, um, contours, this is just the USGS.
Yeah.
Behind, so the existing contours that we have, when you look at the, um, grading line, they don't run perpendicular to the contours. So I think it just needs to be looked at. I don't really know all the detail.
Yeah, I'll look at them or I'll have them look at them. Just wondering if the, our, what we have for topo is a lot different from what?
No, it's the existing, it's the existing contours. So.
Well, just USGS isn't always as accurate.
No, of course not. But what we had asked was because the existing, um, topo, the surveyor topo, didn't go far enough back to capture the entire watershed that runs on. So we wanted to be able to see how far up the hill is actually coming to the back of the property because it's a significant amount of water, even though it's high. So if you look back on the three nineteen or the two twenty-nine grading plan, um, you can see, you know, it, we just didn't know how far up it came.
It went. Yeah, yeah.
And so that's why they put the, the USGS under it to get a good idea, which is common practice. So, um, it's showing one watershed and it's this, all this water is coming down into this squail and coming around and discharging into the ditch. That's a separate watershed. Then what's going into the storm system. So it needs to be.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see what you mean.
Straightened out. And there's under drains, which are then picking up some and going in. And are the under drains above or below the outlets to the storm system or is it, you know what I mean? Like there's. Do you know where I'm going with all that?
Okay, so, yeah. And, um, I, I.
And that's just the pre, the post, there's a similar situation.
Okay. Pre and post.
And I'm happy to, to write some of this down.
Well, I guess what's, I, I, yeah, what's, so the upshot of the SWIP right now is what? Like what would we want to direct this applicant to do?
Yeah.
And, and do we need it done before we do an approval? Or do we, can we approve subject to SWIP? Now, right now we have the, um, the phasing plan, right? We have some questions about it. Are they significant? Is it something that can be conditionally approved or like, we just can't approve anything until we see that? We start with that question.
We, we have gone through projects before where we have looked at the SWIP, um, contingent upon legal and engineering. So we, we currently, currently got that under review, but some of the things Aaron brought up are the things that we want to look at again.
Okay.
So, you know, we could, we could look at that and work with the outfit and, and try to take that, try to take care of that.
So it's enough, like the details, like we're kind of far enough along that we're just in the weeds on it and we can.
I think that there are too many significant things. I think that there are too many significant things that are question marks, there's sheets missing, there's stuff that's not right, there's, I think, there's way too much that needs to be dealt with to even consider approval.
Okay.
The SWIP is not, the, it's just not. I, I, I have more comment, I mean, I just don't think.
But I do think, I do think they can attend to whatever issues they have outside.
Yes, I don't think it's that it's not gonna work.
Right, right.
I think that it's that we need to see it finished. This is like a, this is like a, almost a DD set. Some more detail, but.
Right, so for purposes of planning boards and, and for this, because we have, we have done approvals, like, this is a site, it looks like it's basically gonna work, there's a ton of details on the SWIP. Can we approve it subject to engineering or approval on the SWIP?
And the phasing plan?
Well, that would, we'd never want, that's questionable. So if they, like, we put together comments and Doug gets more detail on the SWIP, is there anything that we think cannot be fixed? Based on what we have right here now?
You're saying, like, they would have to come back?
Right, then, then it's gonna end up being like, oh my gosh, this is so, so much change, so many changes, they can't even do this building where it is.
I think what you might be asking is, although there's a big pile of stuff that needs to be dealt with, would the fixes to any of those things change the project significantly?
Correct.
Okay, yes. Um, no. I don't think that that's the case.
Do, do you agree with that, Doug? Okay, so we could, or this board could approve this project, because what we don't want to happen is, and I think we got it on another project where everything got changed so much that, you know, on the SWIP that it ended up not being right at all, but if this can be approved, subject to engineering slash SWIP, we can do that if our wish is comfortable with it. The other thing is the phasing plan. Is that something that needs to come back here? Or can we, um, give a, a basic outline of what needs to be in the phasing plan?
I think that's my, that's my biggest concern, the phasing plan. Try and keep one building open as you build the other one, parking, stormwater, all sorts of things, and whoa. And I don't think I have a good, I haven't seen a good answer yet for that. But when I speak at one vote, I try for myself, and that'll be.
Yeah, let me ask the applicant for a second too, just, just in case, because the drawings aren't exactly. We, we, well, we have that one that's the wrong drawing. Um, this says phase one, site preparation. Is there phase two?
The phase two is the, well, the phase two is basically the rest of the plans, that is, the, the new project.
So are we, are we okay with that, or do we need a new?
Yeah.
I think.
What was originally, the, the overall master plan for this phase two? Which is, right, which is what the project is. We provided the, the phasing plans so you could see the.
The first phase.
The, yeah, how, how it, we're going to work with, you know, providing areas for contractor parking, access to contractor. So that's why that was in the set.
When did we get that?
That is.
No, the, like, the entire phasing.
The first, the first and second time was probably here.
Like, here?
Uh, maybe, yeah, here, or maybe.
Yeah, I mean, I was.
Yeah.
And we need that on one.
Yeah.
Wait, for the amendment? It was submitted, or was it submitted for the initial project two years ago?
Uh, I think it's two years ago.
So when you came to the current, the amendments.
The first, second, third time we were here, I believe that was the plan that was in the package. Even.
What, the plan has changed?
No.
Well, for the driveway, it did, so.
Oh, yes, yeah, and that was submitted, right, with the, one of the amendments that were, you guys, pull up the drive? All these.
Yeah, I think it went, it was like over.
Last two sets, yeah, the last two sets.
Yeah, and honestly, for me, that's not a case at all.
Oh, that is the one, yeah.
This is the old one, sorry, this is, I had this up as the reading plan, this is the most recent set.
But that is, that is fixed to, that we just have.
Yeah.
Yeah, all, yeah.
The new, the new.
Yeah.
The new.
Basically, the whole track.
Yeah.
Too long.
It's, it's there, I mean, so what they're showing is, here's the existing, here's the new building proposed in construct, you know, will be in construction. But what we wanna, it's, it's, we need to see them working, I think you know, I understand what you're getting at.
Okay. So do we, as the board, feel like, again, do, is that something that the board wants to see prior to making an approval, or can we have our people conditional on engineering review, engineering with a SWIP and engineering with the phasing plan?
So, excuse my ignorance, my question. If the board approves this, does that mean construction can at least proceed?
No, not until those two things happen.
But the processes leading up to construction, like bidding and getting financing and contracts?
Well, that's, that's up to you guys, right, but as far as this, this board, if there is a, a conditional approval based on a revised, um, phasing plan and all of the SWIP of questions being answered and approved by engineering, and we can put a timeframe on it. I, I, I don't know how detailed the board needs to get. Well, not on the, on the SWIP, but in the general sense, I think it's going to be resolved. For, on the, on the phasing plan.
Well, in some ways, the SWIP and the phasing plan, in this case, are very close in time together. And especially with the way the stormwater is handled during the phasing, because there will be a half a year, a whole construction season, if you will, that there are both of these buildings in place. Um, it's not like there's a pond somewhere that needs to be redesigned.
So I think I'm hearing from at least half of the board.
Reasonable to do it.
I think I'm hearing from at least half of the board that we do not wanna make a decision tonight, and we want the SWIP to be worked out with engineering, and we wanna see a full phasing plan, is that correct?
Yes, I'm, my concern basically is, I mean, it's, it's close to a creek, uh, this is all by the storm, right, I mean, that's, we don't know what's gonna happen when we're gonna see everything corrected. So, yeah.
As a board, we wanna be responsive for that final okay on both of these, because of how closely they're together.
Okay, great, that's an answer.
Oftentimes, you might see a series of drawings, right? Here's phase A, B, C, or D. And then that would be easiest for the codes officer, he gets a complaint, they go out and say, this is what, this is what phase B was supposed to be, the applicant is doing it for the drawings, right? We, we don't have a problem with it, or we do have a problem with it.
It helps a lot.
I think a picture's, a picture's worth a thousand words on that, right?
Did we issue building permits for phase and subsequent one, or is it building permit for the entire project? Very, surrender, or is it?
It would, it would generally be a building permit for the project, yes, yes. But inside that building, from the, the site plan, right, it would lay out.
Yeah, I understand, and the building permission based on this package of plan with phases in it, the ones from the other.
I, I, I did wanna add just one more thing, that the, the existing building is falling down. Um, the well is failing, the septic's failing, they continually, they have holes in the roof, they have to, and they have catches, so the owner is very anxious to get out and, and start construction, so. Um, we are, it's, it's, we, we obviously wanna do everything that you guys are asking, so, um, um, and we'll do as quickly as we can, because everybody's ready, everybody's ready to go.
I, I think, I think, Bernard, what's happened here? I talked to Lisa, I talked to Ben and Jamie a little bit, is, you know, in, in your, in your push to get the project done, we've been getting a lot of things sheet by sheet and piece by piece. And I think it's kind of, I mean, what we're seeing here now is, by doing that, you kind of lost the process that makes everything come together, right? So, you know, I know a couple of weeks ago, we got two sheets for the SWIP, and we were told, well, just supplement whatever you got. And we said, well, we really need a full SWIP because we need to look at it in aggregate, right? And, you know, like, like here, I mean, we got a phasing plan. It's a phasing plan, but there wasn't a lot of detail to it. So I think we, you know, in, in, in the push to try to get the project moving forward, I think we've lost some of that, so if we could just, you know, take a breath and make sure that we get everything together, and, you know, we could send you some more comments to help you, um, because, you know, the chair, the, the chairwoman and myself, and attorney and we have a working group that have talked, and we'd like to see this project get built, because we think it's a great project, we think the building is great, a lot of people in the community use it, and we've all been to the site and we've seen it, you know, the parking is inadequate, the building's falling down, um, there's safety issues going on to the road, so, you know, that's, that's what we wanna do. And I know that I've talked several times in the last week or two to say, hey, we really want to push this along, to make sure this gets approved, that it's adequate for the area and the outcast, so. I gotta make a suggestion. If you're gonna be submitting, bringing all these new drawings, updating and stuff, you can also get comments like, well, this is not the last one that we saw, right?
Yeah.
So use the same ones, just bubble it, you know, this is a change, you know, bubble it, we do an amended.
I don't think we can do that, we can't do that. No, I know what you're saying, you can't do a standard job, like, markups on.
No, I didn't, no, no, I don't think that's what David's saying, right? I mean, normally what you would see is like a triangle, this is change one, so, so, you know, off to the, off to the right.
Oh, yeah.
Where there are all these different submission dates, there should be a triangle in the drawing to show us that's where that changed. Of course, it was that, it's confusing.
Well, you get a lot of overriding, like, once they know that it covers up something else. We do, whenever we submit, we do provide a response letter every time and say, with this revision date, these are the items that we've changed in response to comments, so we always provide that.
The letters that you do.
Yeah.
Are amazing.
We always do that, because then you can follow.
I personally think it would be too confusing to have, have that, because then you, then does it get added, and it's a lot more on the tab.
No, no, not at all, I'm trying to make it easier.
Um, okay, so Erin, so we'll do the, Erin, you'll get your comments and Doug.
I will.
He can send, and then you can get with Ed, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and.
Actually, I send my comments to Lisa typically.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Copy, whatever, but.
Whatever, yeah, the delivery is, it's fine. Um, and then, so Doug, when you've gotten everything you need from Doug, uh, Ed.
Yes.
Then you'll let us know.
Yes.
And then, I, I, because I don't wanna rush it, like, try to get it before the next, let's, let's get it done and done right this time and come back. So, so not necessarily the next week, I wanna make time for Doug to get those comments and then skip for that, so that he understands everything, and I know you've taken a lot of notes too, so.
I'll do mine tomorrow.
Yeah, because like Doug said, you know, we definitely wanna see this happen and um, not only I think it's gonna be great, it's gonna look great, look, it's gonna look great, it's definitely in that site. Um, so I'm, I'm very, I'm very close to it, so I'm excited.
What's the schedule for this project?
Um, well, pending approval, um, timeline, uh, six, eight months of construction, so hopefully it will be done, um, hard limits required, then just submit schedules, um, schedules being done, um, as early as in October, early November. Yeah, so we can move in hopefully before Thanksgiving and.
Okay.
All right, and then Doug, Doug will work out with Ed, and then he'll get it to Lisa and see where that falls on her meeting schedule.
Okay.
All right.
We'll be back.
All right. Thanks for, I'm very.
Thank you for your patience.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is a recommendation to the town board to allow and regulate cannabis dispensaries in the RT zoning district. So there's a slight confusion. Um, we are actually supposed to be looking at and providing feedback on the local law of twenty twenty-four, um, dash length right now, amending the zoning code to allow and regulate cannabis dispensaries in the RT district. So, um, just a couple of comments, I'll start off with a couple of comments of my own, and then I'll have you guys weigh in.
Wait, maybe?
Okay.
All right, just, I have one thing. Can we pull up the area that we're talking about, and can you confirm?
And there is some confusion about it.
There's only one RT district in the town.
Yes.
So, let's, let's maybe look at a spreadsheet of it, because I think it's gonna help the conversation.
There is a little confusion with the zone, the way it's on, on the map online, and to what Rich and some others understand is the actual case. So, um, the current online zoning map, it shows two parcels for RT between Juke K Road and Tyler Port. However, Rich and Lisa were saying that there's at least six or seven.
There's no doubt in my mind that there were six or seven parcels within the RT.
That's, no.
Look at our tax map.
There's so many parcels in there.
Right, and you know, because there, there's only, there's only four that are marked. Is that map on the wall enough, correct?
I have it printed out, the current one, that I keep in mind.
Do you see RT on that at all?
Yeah, it's the red, and it's one little blob.
And that one?
No, not on there. The other thing that I think maybe you can speak to more, um, Jeannie, is how, because we're just a town, the village butts right up against that. And so the village has their own rules, don't they? And the way it matches up with our stuff, we should think about, because it looks like it's just a little blob there, but they might have something that their zoning continues that same style, or if it doesn't have the same name, like, that's something we have to really think about.
Can I say something, because I think this law is woefully weak. It makes no sense to me at all. And the recommendation that I personally think should be made is that a small committee, one or two people from the planning board, one or two people from the town board, maybe attorney involved, goes through and takes a look at what New York State law is and what we're trying to do here. And, and I'll just give you a couple of examples. New York State law allows this type of establishment to open at eight in the morning and close at midnight. And so the question's gotta be, is that what is acceptable in our town, or do we wanna modify that, that rule? They, state law allows delivery. They allow drive-through windows. They allow several things, and I think there's gotta be some type of consensus and written in the law of what we as a town wanna do. So I don't, I don't think there's anything we, personally, I don't think there's anything we can really do tonight, other than say, hey, this is gonna be studied. And after, one perfect cannabis dispenser is not defined in our code.
Yeah.
What is it? Now, New York State has defined it, and do we wanna live with that, do we wanna somewhat restrict it?
That was one of my comments.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I think it needs some study, and I don't think, I, I'm not prepared to make a recommendation or vote for a recommendation to approve it or deny it without further study, and so my recommendation is, we need to have some further study on this, whether it's with the town board. whether it's with the town board, on our own or whatever, to try to figure out what exactly do we think the town wants. Now, if, if we, if we go back and say, hey, the dispensary, oh, by the way, they, they also can't smoke on the premises. So do we want to add something like that?
I think, I think you can't with the dispensary. Who's on the premises, that's a whole different thing. It's a lounge.
Correct. And I'll take it a step further. Because the town board did not opt out of the law by December thirty first, we're now obligated to have lounges and dispensaries. So why not try to put together a law for both now while we have an opportunity? So Valerie, that, those are my comments and I'll keep my mouth shut.
Okay, no, no, okay. Um, yeah, so I'm hearing some sort of small work group to, for further study for the cannabis in general.
That's, that's my view of it.
Okay.
But I'm only one vote.
Okay. Um, yeah, maybe, so. It, I think in the last, um, time there was a recommendation from the board, there was, this is piecemeal, let's try to do it all at once. Because they're in this spot, they were having the pop-ups. So cannabis is not regulated in the town. They did allow the pop-up, now they want them to allow them to be there apparently.
Yeah.
Permanently. But it's ignoring the whole question.
Same as with one small RT district. When this specific thing happens, thinking back fifty years, it's sort of like we construed the spot zoning. I mean, I'm not, in a, we're in a life where contentious, you know, the, the envision reaches in this, in these sorts of operations. So proceeds, so there's one in one small district at the southern end of the town. And somebody comes in and looks at this and there's probably time limits and if we can file such a concern, says, well, why, why does it seem to be structured to benefit one entity in one place? It almost precludes anybody else from entering the market. And I, I think this whole thing is a dumb idea. I have no interest in it. I don't. So one hand, I wish this didn't exist at all, but it does. Which part of our society seems to think it's significant, you know, within their law? So in terms of our regulatory structure and how town allocates a resource that can be economically useful in some sector of our private economy, is it good, is appropriate to proceed if only one entity is trying to gain access to it?
I'd like to add to that.
It's very, it's similar, it's similar, but it is very, it is significant that it's basically one person, one retailer is gonna be able to take advantage of cannabis.
Why is the town board asking us to comment on the RT district? When they're gonna have a open meeting, public hearing on the tenth of April about the whole town? What then, what possible value could there be in talking about this little place? Are they looking for us to give them a wedge? Are they hoping that we'll say, great idea, wonderful idea? And then they can bank on, well, the planning board thought it was terrific. I am, I'm, I'm, great deal of difficulty understanding why we're even being asked to do this.
Well, because it's, it's a zoning thing and it, and it has to get referred here.
Okay, then it's a zoning thing, it makes no sense at all. Why in the world would you take this little tiny district and create something inside of it that's unique to this district and nothing else? It's, it's crazy. I don't care whether it's RT, R1, or the whole town. If you're talking about the town code, you shouldn't have this kind of an operation in this, in this particular area, period.
Well, I, I, I think, Ernie, that's, that can be a comment that we have, but it's up to the town board. They're the ones that make the decision, whatever.
Of course, I understand.
But this, this law is probably the weakest law I have seen since the chicken food law.
You're talking about the town or state?
Town.
Okay.
It's just, there's, there's no meat to this, there's no, I, I, I don't even know where this came from. I don't know who wrote it. But it needs to be modified and added to, to get to something that can be enforceable and understandable and.
Are you looking for volunteers, Valerie? Are you a working group?
Yeah. Well, I think if that's one of our recommendations.
If it is and you do so, I'd be happy to volunteer for that.
Okay.
That, that, that is my recommendation. It needs, it needs to work. It needs to work.
I think.
The definitions are not even.
It's not even in there.
Right, and we, at the very least, maybe we need some definition.
And, and I guess Valerie, if I could just jump in again. The, the way I read, the way the law is written, is they have to come to us for a special use permit.
Yes.
And if we have the ability, and, and this is dangerous, but if we have the ability to set hours of operation, well, we gotta be consistent. So why not put it in the law?
That's controversial as to, you know, whether the hours of operation can be limited if the, um, states already decided it. So you gotta give it a home, home rule law, right?
I believe what I read is that. The town can modify it. The town can modify it with the law. But it should be consistent, so.
But right now, all you have is cannabis dispensary, anything goes whatever New York state said.
Right.
It's really a tap anyway.
They can sell jewelry and T-shirts and clothing in a cannabis dispenser. And, and I guess what I'm saying is, we need to look, I, I think the town needs to look at this to find out, is this something they want? As a matter of fact, they talk about signage in the law. And they say, you can't have any type of cannabis promotional signage on the building. The one we have does. So I mean, I, I, I just think we need to get our ducks in a row on something like this to, to make it system.
Under special use permit, it says the planning board can regulate.
It does, it, it, it does, but I, I think you would need, have to be a lot more specific.
I agree.
To cannabis.
I agree, cause you don't want one store to be open these hours, another one open these hours. I mean, it's gotta be, well, put it in the law.
Well, I didn't even get to that level of it at my start. And I'm looking at this from the top down. And first of all, and I'm gonna say this, and I'm not gonna say anything more, unless I'm asked. I don't feel that the sale of cannabis has any business being in this zone, period. It should be in a commercial zone. It should be treated with the same regulations as alcohol sales. I don't have any idea, and I haven't done my research on how it got to this point, why anybody, anywhere thinks it's appropriate to sell things like this in the same zone where a daycare center is allowed and a care home and the teaching of music, dance, or pupils being in instruction. I'm not opposed to cannabis. I really don't care. But I don't think that it has any business being anywhere near this zone. For what reason it's come here, I don't know, and I might get in trouble for this opinion, but it should be sold where other things like this are being sold. Would you have a pop-up liquor store? Would you have a pop-up cigarette shop? Like, I'm, I just, and it might actually deter other people who have legitimate special use accessory use permits or whatever that could be in this zone. It might actually deter people who would otherwise want to do their business in this zone under the appropriate code from being there. Because they don't want to be next to something like this. Would you want to set up a daycare in your home or whatever next to this? I mean, I don't think it's appropriate because I think then you end up having to look at all these other uses and say, do you wanna, um, stay in a bed and breakfast next to the cannabis pop-up dispensary? So that's where I stop.
The state, the state does have limitations. The state does have limitations, five hundred feet from daycare, schools, churches.
We don't even have to get into that. It, it's just.
I agree, it needs more review. I mean, I, I, I don't know.
I think the, I think, and I'm just gonna relay this information. I think that, I'm not saying I agree with it, I'm just saying I'm relaying the information. I think part of the reason, and that this would go along if Rich is correct in thinking there's multiple parcels in this district, ordering the village of Manlius, there are, there is a liquor store right down the street at the Tops Plaza. Um, I think the goal was, or, and was to have that strip become more, um, transition from residential because of the village, so.
Well, but, and one thing I, I, I do notice that it wasn't much to notice because there's not that much change. But it said you have to keep it in that building the way it looks.
Yeah.
If it's going to be allowed, make it look nice, you know?
Not look like a neat house.
No, 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 but I'm saying that that's what it says.
Yeah.
You have to put it in, but if, if this is, but it, it, it goes into the regular, um, the question of, is this the right place for it? But if you're going to have it, then have a nice.
Make it look a little nice.
Build it. Don't just have it in a house.
But that's, that's like sneaky, weird stuff to have it in the house. It's just weird.
We've, we've got two things going. I just wondered, I noticed what's going on here. One is, we need this clear law that defines for us what we're giving, which is what Rich is for.
Yes.
The second one is, we have to decide how our zoning changes will happen based on the law. Regardless of what our personal opinion is on that part, right? So first, we gotta get our ducks in a row, get the law. And then afterwards, we can look at and see if we can justify, or we'd like to change the zoning to meet the law. So we have two steps. I think we got to do the first step first.
Yeah. No, I agree, cause I agree with Doug that it's like a spot zoning, it's not the best way to go around it.
Well, I, I have no idea, cause with, for my, how, how did that pop up like this?
You want me to tell you? Doug, you know, Doug.
You mean the stone or the cannabis?
No, I think only Rich and I know.
I think the cannabis, I think.
At least with ours. This was, I remember, they were, it was the RM zone, which is on Route Five from the Fayetteville, it used to be Fayetteville Mall, all the way to, um, the corners. That was put together because they wanted to promote small, like attorneys, dentists, doctors, to have offices. And to, to keep the residential character. That was the important thing. So this was also RM. In that, in this, yeah, what I believe are six, seven houses.
Looks like seven. Seven parcels.
Yeah, and there was a, a chocolate maker. A chocolate maker that wanted to make chocolate and sell it all over the world. And the town board listened to them and said, well, it's not a permitted use in RM. So let's create a new zone. And they created RT, which by the way, the guy could, could make chocolate in that zone and sell it all over the world, which was great. So.
Fast forward.
So, well, wait, I, I want to say this because Fred Gilbert and I attended at least two town board meetings saying, this is a huge mistake. Don't do it. They did it anyway. And the chocolate maker never went into the house that he was proposing to go into on one seventy-three. He went behind a bottle redemption center. So he never even used, they never needed to change that zone. So here we have RT.
It was made of chocolate.
But if you read these lists, there's no chocolate maker who would fit.
No, but it, it's the ability to produce food or, there's something about.
I'm gonna say it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's in there. It may not be as much as you got there, but.
There's another layer to your story right there.
Is there anyone in the, in the current?
No.
Current RT zone that is.
Cooking food?
That is there that couldn't be in an RM zone?
No, no.
Is it dog room or? Maybe our recommendation is the planning board that we, maybe our recommendation could be besides the work group and the zoning, that we changed it to, changed it to something like RM because, I mean, it's, it's actually strange how it, it is pretty consistent in the other boundaries of the villages, but not there.
Now I'm loaded on chocolate canons.
But see. I think this is. To me, this is really important. This is a, this is an important issue for a town.
Yeah.
This is not a use that has been here for long. It's not a use that a lot of people appreciate or approve of. So I really think that there needs to be some work done and a study. And people come to some kind of an understanding and agreement before we, before, so.
There's something more to the retail, excuse me, what is the date that this is before the board?
April tenth.
If your town board is April tenth, this is our public address.
And. Do we move the cannabis with them?
Um, no. Well, yeah, we, yeah, we do on April eighth. But we put it on this one.
Right.
To make sure we had a, with this question.
What, having heard all this, when you listen back to the tape and do your minutes, um, could you file something that would be sent around?
Sure.
Um, I did, we did previously when they were going to do the pop-up over there, which they did, and apparently it was successful. Um, the, the recommendation was the definition of putting it retail to include cannabis, should that be there? Um, because it's a bad precedent. Um, it's too tame a treatment of the subject matter, should be treated similar to liquor sales. How far from churches, schools, residential should be specifically in the town statute. Um, the law that the state has proposed for this is not sufficient for the needs of the board and the town local law needs to state specifics as to what is right for this community. Should that be in the same sentence as residential? This is RT, it is right next to residential. It's meant to be transitional between businesses, residential and the village's residential, so similar to what was said yesterday. Um, there was something about the thirty days, something about the pop-ups. Um, notices should be sent to neighbors specifically within five hundred feet of this district. Because this is a townwide law that involves zoning, unless you happen to read it in the, wherever, there are no notices sent out to anyone.
Some letters were sent to within a thousand feet of all seven of those properties.
Okay. Well, that's good. Somebody sent that from the west.
Yeah. So they're gonna just cut the base from what we have left?
No, not, not at all. I very took no things were sent, but I just wanted to say that's what, um.
I think there is, I, I think part of the comment to back to the retail, because I think our, all of our, um, laws and zones and definitions are confusing on that because I don't, I can't remember exactly that it says in retail, but when Erin's speaking to alcohol. Um, because we also have a section in zoning on adult use. And I know it comes to mind when people say adult use, but in our definition in the code, it says anything prohibiting minors.
So is it also adult use?
Interesting.
So I'm wondering.
It's an interesting point.
Yeah.
So.
So I guess there was a different, I was, I was, it was explained to me that there's a difference between a minor being able to walk into an establishment and not be able to walk into an establishment.
So I, I think I'm probably the only one left, um, that understands the concept. If you look at our zoning map, um, and ask legal counsel, Tim Kestie, who was here for a long time, Tim's a longer here. But if you look at our zoning map, you look at our code, um, just, just proof of thought. You don't see a lot of CB. You've got, you see one or two locations for CB.
What's C B commercial of the business? I only see commercial A.
And Tim used CB for adult use, right? So that's, right? So that's why you see one or two spots for CB. And it was, it was, people started looking and saying, I don't see B over here and over there. You have to be certain respect if you read the code, you attribute the code, the way Tim did. That's where CB is allowed in the town. And if you look, it was way up in the northeast area. Yes, Doug.
West of Fremont.
And so, I, I argue, Valerie, you're.
Well, I guess, yeah, I just wonder, I think there needs to be clarification as between, not necessarily, I'm not saying it's necessarily adult use, but I'm trying to figure out where alcohol falls in.
I was gonna say alcohol and this.
This would fall similarly to alcohol.
Why wouldn't we be the same?
I don't know if it's clear in the retail section, I'd have to look at that.
I think they should be considered the same.
That might be part of what the group, the, the group looks at, is where, where, where does alcohol fit into it? And why couldn't we have this be the same?
Right, we got, I'm just wondering, is it, we got a liquor store a hundred yards from a site plan, how is that?
Yeah, I mean, regional shopping, neighborhood shopping, all those, you can have all, so does that mean we can have these?
I, I don't know.
I don't know either, I'm just saying, these are the kind of things that need to be discussed.
So is that why the twenty twenty-two draft law just had C A, C B, neighborhood shopping, and industrial? That's a place for cannabis dispensing.
Yeah, which it, it, it makes sense, I mean, because, you know, there's, there's a big ambition, but now we have a comprehensive plan of liquor stores, and, you know, that's fine, so.
I'm pretty sure the comprehensive plan is not, I look at it actually for this.
But I think, I think, I think what we're saying is consistency would be, would be good, especially from a planning board standpoint, for us to be able to, this, this lead, yes, we could say we wanted a special permit for just a year, or we wouldn't have to necessarily say seven years, we could say that, but that leaves a lot on the planning board, and I think from a planning board standpoint, it's better to have the consistency and the law to.
And some guidance, some guidance.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Well, I think that that's also unfair to the public, because if we were to say, yes, it's permissible with a special use permit, and we just choke it down to a year, well, people may put a lot of time and money into setting this stuff up, and then they have to come back every year, and the board, it's on the board, like, you know, somebody's gotta police it, it's like, do you, how do you do it?
Oh, no.
A year.
For one year?
Just, oh, they may go on.
But like, that's not gonna, that's, that's not fair to people.
Correct, it's not fair to that.
We haven't laid out the proper conditions, if we expect somebody that has to come back this year, and they might avoid it something. We need then a better set of our expectations, let one of the property, the current owner.
Well, then there would, if you have a year to do it, maybe something really crappy, where do people park and?
I, Marty, but I, I think that minutia of oversight, means we haven't done the right, the proper kind of expectations of laying them out and giving them a rigid framework that works for a business cycle.
Where are, where do people park in this R T? Um, in the house of the poppers?
That's why.
There's driveways, either here or there, parking areas.
So we have to meet those.
Well, I, I have sat through site plan reviews of these places, and they expect a lot of alcohol.
Yeah.
So is this even appropriate?
No.
Here, well, again, and that's, I, I hopefully Lisa's getting off this, but it's just gonna be, okay, you know, if, we can't change the building, that's what it's gonna look like.
Building we're talking about specifically.
And when I, and when I read, when I read the New York State law, that sign is not the, that's on the face of the building.
So Jamie, Matt, I think that if we have a law, it's clear that we're making decisions on it. It still doesn't mean when they come to us for a permit, we can give it, we can put whatever restrictions, and they have to meet that certain, all the other regulations that we, we would put on them, including the party, so I think we're going down.
That, that's true, that's true.
So therefore, let's just get that, that law first, if, get the definitions correct, so when we make decisions, it will be consistent. And I would say it should be, it should be consistent in the later few days.
If this were to pass, though, the way it is, and it comes to this board for a special permit, and the special permit, it, it's presumed that subjects to doing a few things, it's an allowed use, right? So that's what special permit's about. And they come in, and they're like, and the law says you gotta keep it in the same building, and your, and your lot's only eight bit. Who, whose fault is it then, if we're saying you have to have parking for twenty years? Then, goes up on appeal, it's like, hey, you said we had to put it in the same building, and we don't have enough parking, so, you know, whose fault is that?
We didn't say you have to put it in the same building.
Yes, it does, this law does.
The law says you have to put it in the same building if you want it, right? But we didn't have, the board did not say have to put it in that building, and what we're judging is, based on all our regulations.
But you're telling me, is, is it gonna, is that gonna, we have to help, it's a problem, yeah, it's a mess.
It's, the way, the way that's written right now, if they approve it, we're in trouble. It doesn't even say that it has to be a legally New York State licensed dispenser. And right now, I don't know if you've seen news about Okla and trying to control this.
The smoke shops and all that.
There's a lot of licenses out there that are fake and fraudulent.
That would be another note Lisa, if you don't mind, because, leave, you know, because again, if it did get approved, there, there would be some things in this one.
We have definitions also.
If we're not, we're not gonna get our work through and our law, we at least wanna see.
If that definition's all, all, all correct, then that ammunition was the deal.
Do not think you can take a course of action. One company in this town gets access to this new, primitive new business, in this zone, being the only zone where it's permitted, and you're only gonna have one permit, even alone, that limit is size, you have done something extraordinarily wrong. That's my reaction, this is just plain wrong, to lock this up for one business.
Yeah, it's just, it goes against all these.
Something comprehensive.
Okay, so what happens now? Are we just giving our opinion to the board, and then they do what they want?
Yes.
Yeah.
Wait, these are just.
You can go to the. I think that's probably valid.
Who is gonna make the statement, or what is the statement?
Lisa's gonna put together all of these comments, and try to distill, because some people read the same comments, and circulate them as per.
Then we would respond to you under attorney's.
Yes, so Lisa will send it to me, I will send it to each of you, and you respond if you think it's correct.
But only to you.
Right, right, and then send it, then we'll send it, and we'll have to vote on it on April, um, eighth.
Yeah.
I think that town board members listen, you know, to this meeting, so they'll probably hear it, many will, some won't.
I think that's a good point.
I would suggest, I think it's not appropriate for me to attend the public hearing and speak on that the next meeting for several reasons, but I might send an email to the board.
Yes, if, if, if for your personal opinion.
Yeah, I mean, not as a, right, correct, our, our name's done.
So before I make my motion, would your?
Wait, I have other business.
Oh, I was gonna ask you a question, too, okay, go ahead.
All right, well, real quick, hopefully. Our other, we do have a couple things on other business, I'll start with a quick one. Just a reminder, there is the accessory dwelling unit work session on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, this Wednesday, at five P M here, for the bats.
That was my question, when?
When, five P M this Wednesday, okay. The second one is, just as an F Y I, um, the Woodland Hills project, who, I'm hoping, and I know our new members haven't, um, had a follow-up with that project yet, but just to let you know, they are actively working with the Army Corps of Engineers, um, to get their, the permit, um, so they have to do some tree clearing, but it does not affect the trees that we previously discussed in meetings, that we wanted marked, and the neighbor wanted marked up at the north end of the property. So, but they're doing what they're supposed to be doing to get their permit, that they need to get it before.
What is the tree issue of tree form?
The west?
What is the tree issue?
There, there were, um, way back, almost.
Is this the back to the, or something else?
There was a lot, there was a large amount of tree felling on the property, um, years ago.
Okay.
So it's a sensitive issue with the, um, community and the neighbors, so, um, that, and, and just to let you know that they're still actively working on that project.
So, look, why are they having to take down trees to do wetland delineation?
I, that's.
No, no deep answer to that, that's the Army Corps and the Fish and Wildlife stuff that they had to.
What do you, Doug, why, why would they take down trees to do a wetland delineation?
I, I just, I just saw the email at this point, and I don't, I don't know why. I mean, they, they mentioned Army Corps, they, they mentioned the bats, basically what Valerie said. I don't see the Virginia role for the board or the town at this time.
We did talk about leaving trees on the northwest property line, because of the.
Yeah, and this is down by where the basins would be, so they probably, the trees wouldn't, so those are the ones they were going there anymore, or anything, yeah. Once the basins are there, there won't be trees in the other base, it's interesting.
How clever.
Um, I did, I, I did want, um, that was all my other, excuse me, yeah, um, so, this accessory dwelling unit law is going to, um, affect this board tremendously. Um, so I really recommend that you read that, um, and come to the study session if you can, or you can come out by Zoom, because what is going to happen is the accessory dwelling units are going to come here. All of this criterion that the board needs to get, look at, and whether it's good or not, and it's, I think it's, well, I'll let them make their own opinion about it, but I think it needs some, um, some significant, um.
Is your new construction law, is, is our proposed cognizance of that law?
Oh, yes, yeah.
I think that law has all these, when I read or Paul reading, I always assume that the accessory dwelling unit is kind of a freestanding thing, and I look at, there's all sorts of definitions, if they're within a building, how they're within a building, if they're in on to the building.
Yeah.
And I did not, I would say the building code deals if it's, for a separate unit, does it have to have its own sewer? Does it have to have its own utilities, can it take it off a current building?
Right, it, it's, a lot of it is addressed, um, in this, in this.
I really didn't see that.
Yeah, it, it was a little bit.
Or if it left it up to the building code.
Um, I can't remember about that, but, but there were, there were a number of, of things, and there's, and, and there are some other, um, if you, if you Google and wanna look at what some other towns and things have done, that's going to be helpful. If you opt in, there are certain things in the, in the state law that are gonna have to be in your law. Um, they, it is being proposed in all manner of residential and other districts, so your next door neighbor can do it if they, they meet the criterion. Um, there currently is, um, the, the code says, there can only be twenty-five. Kind of like, the thing is, um, they can change it, like, unless there's twenty-five, and they can say, well, twenty-five more, or, you know, like, who rushes in and gets the first twenty-five, you know? That, it's, it's another kind of a strange, um, thing, but I see that other towns have regulated, uh, numbers on an annual basis.
Jamie, what is that, that you're looking at, that is some.
Not on my notes, I'm in.
And this is six hundred?
Jamie, I noticed that I saw the twenty-five unit total in the town, but I didn't see anywhere in there of a restriction of the number of units on a property.
I did not see there.
Okay, because I, I, personally, you know, I, I kinda look at this and say, okay, if you've got five acres or less, you get none. If you got five to ten, you get two, if you get ten, something like that, that kind of helps us figure out how many units these people can get.
Yes.
I, I, I wouldn't wanna see five units on a one acre lot.
For a range, well.
Not to mention, if they had public water, they'd have to have separate water lines now, right, Doug?
Well, I don't know.
I don't know.
Because it's only for commercial, I don't know if it's for residential, right?
Yeah, not technically.
Well, Aqua's been.
Aqua's said, yes.
Out there, yeah. Oh, that's right, that's what I.
Yeah, okay.
So it's an interesting thing.
And are they, does that change the practice, did you get more than one, I mean, charge for sewer for the accessory dwelling unit or not?
Well, the question is, if there's an accessory dwelling unit, then the assessor needs to say, wow, now these people are making money on an accessory dwelling unit, so how much can you increase the taxes, I don't know, what if? And, 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 well, you're, you're the guy, you can tell me.
Initially, it'd be on what it costs to build it, after that, it'll be how much income that particular property from the state of New York, because they know all this, they'll tell you how much it should make, and that's how you assess it, because then it's in there.
How much it should be.
Yeah, which is why.
Okay, I'll make a motion, Jerry.
I'm sorry.